Time to order. Will you lead us in the pledge?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clock on the wall is wrong. We were going by the directors. Computer. Recognition of guests.
Dr. Burrow, it is great tonight that we are going to, on our above and beyond award tonight and something good, we are going to recognize our bus drivers and our bus companies. And as you know, sometimes when people do a good job, it just kind of goes unnoticed. And our bus drivers and contractors do a tremendous job every day getting our students to school and back home. And we just want to take a little time tonight to, just to thank them for the job they do, first of all, and just kind of recognize some of their excellent bus drivers. So at this time, I will call Mr. Myers. And Mr. Golden. And Mr. McCamey.
Hey, Dr. Barrett, right? These folks do an incredible job, a hard job. Imagine being on a 35-foot vehicle with 40 kids behind you twice a day for 177 days a year. And they do a great job. Johnny is out there, and Brenda will tell you that she told me tonight that he does a good job. He's gonna call our folks up. And we're proud to have our contractors here. We've got Jim Butler, Robert Longmire, David Landreth.
Parker.
We've got David Parker back there. Amber Lee, you need to come up here.
Yeah.
She was trying to get out of it, too.
Scotty wasn't here.
Amber Lee really keeps all of these people in lives, what she does. She's the above and beyond.
Go on, John.
Mr. McCamey's gonna hand out as you read your names, because he is our director over Transportation Committee.
First of all, I'd like to say I thank y'all for hearing today to listen to what I have to say about my bus drivers and our contractors. We're here today to honor the people that service our children every day in Aronson County. There are one way to say that they are the first ones that see our kids in the morning and the last one to see them in the afternoon. And I really appreciate them for that. Even though that they gotta get up early in the morning on the cold winter months, I mean, yeah, winter months, and the hot afternoons driving that bus, taking our kids back to school. It's hard for them to do that. It's hard for them to follow the law as far as the roads. And you got 40 kids in the back of that bus screaming and yelling. It's hard on them, and I know it is. And most of all, you know, they do the best they can. And me and Amber Lee and I and Kelly, we try to help them as much as we can when they have the complaints. So, you know, a lot of parents don't understand that these people, bus drivers, are really working diligently hard for each and every one of our kids. They're my kids as well as they're the people out in the communities. I really, really love them for what they do. I could not do it. It's hard. It's very hard. And, you know, there's a lot I gotta say, but me and Amber Lee definitely appreciate them more than anything in the world. And sorry about it, I'm kind of nervous up here talking to y'all. But we have six contractors in our county. And the contractor we have is Butler. If you don't mind standing, Jim Butler and his wife. That's Jim Butler. He does all the transportation in Lake City. We have Robert Longmire. If you don't mind standing up, sir. He's another one of our bus drivers. And he does up in Andersonville area. We have David Parker. And he does all Clinton and Norwood. David Landreth. If you don't mind standing up, him and Tracy. David's everywhere. There ain't no place that he can be. Claxton Bus Line, Don Underwood and Kay Smith. If you don't mind standing, I appreciate it. Scotty Phillips, he's not here. But we appreciate Scotty. He drives up on the mountains, and that's a rough road coming down that hill. But we also want to appreciate Kimberly Adams for Butler Line. If you don't mind standing, Kimberly. Adams. If you don't mind, come up here and get this from us. Appreciation beyond for what you've done for Aronson County School and the children. You're welcome.
I'll give you a picture.
Thank you very much. We have Tammy Allen. She drives for Robert Longmire. Thank you for your service as well. Thank you, man. Ms. Becky King. She drives for David Landreth. I'm sorry for not giving y'all the years. Ms. Kimberly Adams drove for 15 years. Tammy Allen, she drove for 18 years. Ms. Becky have drove for 13 years. And then we have Claxton Bus Line, Ms. Pat Sanford.
How many years did that?
I didn't have Pat. How many years, Pat? I apologize to you.
Almost 25.
25 years. And the one I like to say a lot of words about this gentleman, he drove me when I was a kid in elementary. I went to St. Liver Elementary. And if my understanding is that he was driving for the county back then before we start doing contractors, correct? Kenneth? Kenneth, didn't you drive for the county? Kenneth Osborne, ladies and gentlemen, he drove for 50 years in Aronson County School. 50 years. Come on up, Kenneth. Come on and get this award. Bus 40 when he drove. Buck, what? What's a buckboard? Oh, buggy? No. No. Hey, Kenneth is a good man. He been driving for a very long time, and I really, really appreciate him. And Kenneth, you don't have to pull in front of bus and holler at Smokey no more for me. If you did something wrong, Kenneth will pull in front of your yard and blow the horn and your daddy and them come outside. And back then, we got a whip. We got a good whip. Scotty's not here tonight, so we'll get Scotty taken care of later. He's not here tonight, and I'll take that in honor of his driver. And this going to Mike Burge. And he's also a very good driver as well. My bus drivers and contractors, I appreciate you more than anything in the world. I appreciate your contractors for taking care of your employees. It's a blessing for y'all and all your drivers. I will be there for you if you need me, if they allow me to stay and do this. But y'all mean a lot to me. And anytime that y'all need me, you know how to call me. I don't mind coming up to you. Well, I appreciate it. But most of all, I thank you, and I'm pretty sure the boards appreciate you too as well. Thank you.
If nobody in the audience know his number's on the back of the bus.
No. No, it's not. No, it's not. Amber Lee, you got anything to say?
He said it all.
I said it all? Kelly? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Good job.
Johnny and Kelly. Anybody's been on the board as long as I have can really appreciate the bus drivers. I was scared to death. I came in tonight and I saw Robert Longmire and David. I thought, surely it's not contract. But we really appreciate the job that they all do. I can't remember the last time I've had a complaint about the bus.
Yeah, I told Dr. Burrow we still had four years left on the contract, so we was in good shape.
Boy, I felt good. Persons to be heard. Being none, approval of the agenda. Move second, approval of the agenda, discussion. Not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved to second. Discussion. Not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no, motion carries. Executive approval, there was none this month. Thank goodness. Comments from the chair? Next thing on our agenda is, well, first thing, Monday night is the public hearing for the budget. I think it would help if you bring all your friends and everything over. We tentatively are online, I think, first, aren't they?
Yeah, it's at 5 o'clock. The public hearing's from 5 to 6.
The public hearing's at 5, and the commission meets at 6. So if you can come and bring your friends, it might be helpful. Where's Pam?
Pam?
Hiding behind. Are we all set for Nashville?
Yes, we're all set.
Okay. Anybody that can't go or backs out, let Pam know so we can cancel those reservations on time. That's really all I have, Dr. Barrett.
I've got just a few things, since I didn't do a report this month. We don't do a commission report in June and July. I wanted to go over a few things. As you know, we graduated, this year we graduated 528 seniors. And it was the largest class that we ever graduated from Anderson County High School, 275. Now, we've graduated over 300 at Clinton, but that is the biggest class at Anderson County High School. And this year, they had a record amount of scholarships, just over $15 million of awarded scholarships this year. So it's tremendous to that group. I've got two or three people that have told me, the photographer that was taking pictures of all of Knox County, everybody that did them, they'd said they'd been there two weeks. And he said our groups were one of the most well-managed students and how classy our group was more than he had ever saw. So that was a real compliment to our teachers and our principals and to the students that did a tremendous job that day. Another thing, Hoppy Maryman, I just really want to publicly thank her for what she does with our Gear Up Grant. We're extremely proud that we were announced by the Tennessee Higher Education Mission that our two high schools are in the top three of the 32 Gear Up Schools in the state. And that is, as you know, Gear Up's about putting students in college. And our students received a total of $235,379. $235,000. That's $235,000 our parents didn't have to pay. And that was for the first year of college. Way over $1 million. And as you know, if you get that last dollar scholarship, those are our middle-class working families. A lot of those are first-generation college students. So that is tremendous, that last dollar scholarship, that they can leave college with no debt. And I think those are some good things. On another thing, as of today, we've hired 28 new teachers to fill open positions for this year. Bad news is, we lost three great teachers this week. We lost one to Oak Ridge, we lost one to an online school, and we lost one to Knox County. And it is hard when Knox County is given 4% raise. Oak Ridge is given 3%, Clinton City's given 4%. But on that, I am grateful that the county commission budget approved a 6 cents for our capital project. That in turn allowed us, as a school system, to give $1,000 raise to all employees, which is in turn 2% raise. A lot of the lower, and I really like the way the board does that because the people that make the least money, that is like a 3 and 4% raise for them. People at the top, it's not 2%, but I think it's equitable in that it closes that gap, and I really appreciate that. And I think that by doing that, that allowed us to not have to cut anything else out of the budget except our capital funds, that we moved that $600,000 out to take care of that raise. So there's no more cuts as of today. And we are, just like you said, we really are hopeful that the full commission will approve that budget. It'll be on July the 27th. I think that's at 4 o'clock on the 27th. They do the public hearing, and then they have to wait 10 days before they can take the vote. June, I'm sorry, June 27th. June 27th, yes. Another thing that I'm kind of got mixed feelings on, as you are aware, Frank Hillen decided that he was going to retire as of June 30th after 43 years with the county. And he has done a tremendous job in all the years. He knows probably wherever switch and ever handle and ever gas turn off and things like that that probably nobody ever knows in schools that we don't even know still exist. But Frank has done a tremendous job. He did really struggle with wanting to decide while he's wanting to go. And we had a meeting today, and I think that what Clay said is as it's getting warmer, that decision is a little easier for him. But he's agreed to come back and work a 120-day contract. And you know, when someone with that much experience leaves, personally in my position, sometimes we panic because what are we going to do to fill that position? And Anderson County does a great job of training people to take and fill in them positions. There's nobody ever going to know everything until they sit in that position, and sometimes they don't know what they don't know. But I am excited to announce that on July 1st, Clay McCamey, if Clay will stand up, Clay McCamey has been with us for 23 years, and he will be taking over as our maintenance director. He, the last few years, he's been our maintenance coordinator. He's done a great job. I've really got to work with Clay and Mr. Dill's really got to work with Clay closely over the last few years, and he's done an amazing job. And I think he's going to fill that position, and I am confident he's going to do a great job in that. So if we can, let's give Clay a big round of applause.
You both can work with Andy and Frank for 22 years.
Exactly right, exactly right. Well, and I told him, I said, now, if you have to come, if you really mess up, you have to come for this board. This board's going to be hard on him. So he said, yeah. He understood that. But I think the thing that Clay brings is that it is, being Frank's, Clay's knowledge of technology and where things are going with the way the data is and things like that, I think he's going to just move us to that next level. And I have no doubts that he can do a great job. With, just. Yes.
I want to say something about Frank Hillen.
Yes.
Frank and I have been friends for all the time that he's been here. And I was here, I was with the county the first day he came. And he went from not knowing where all the schools were to knowing everything about every school. And it's been amazing. And somebody asked me, when I moved from transportation to maintenance, what are you going to do? I said, call Frank. And that's what I did. We brought him back from Oak Ridge. And besides being just a tremendous, good, Christian guy, he's a great worker and a great, and I've warned Clay. You're in big shoes. I stepped in some big shoes, but these are huge shoes. And, but I just, there's never been another maintenance guy like Frank Hillen, and we're going to miss him when he decides to take off a day or two.
Well, and he said something about he's trying to figure out if that new phone, if he could only get it to ring three days a week. And I said, no, that's probably not going to happen.
Not going to happen.
No, no.
Dr. Barrett, I'd like to say something about Frank, too. Working at Oak Ridge Schools in Maintenance and Operations Division for 24 years as I did, I got to know Frank quite well. And I would just like to say this. I would have certainly liked to work for somebody like Frank. Frank is the type of person, and I can tell he cares about his employees. He gives his employees all the credit, which Frank does a tremendous job. But most of all, my respect for Frank is what a good person he is. Frank is a person that cares about people, and he shows it through his actions. And I certainly appreciate him for Anderson County Schools and also the friendship that I have developed with Frank over the years. I appreciate it. I think we ought to all give him a big hand.
We are going to do a little celebrating here, the last of July, when we have our custodians and maintenance celebration there. But, no, Frank, it does, I've never, I called him, I remember, I hadn't been director, but I don't know, maybe two or three weeks. And he called me one morning, it was about 5 o'clock. And he said, hey, he said, don't worry. He said, there's no power at Claxton Elementary School. He said, it's been out all night. I said, well, when did you find out? He said, oh, I've been here all night. He said, we about got it on. We'll be ready for school, don't worry about it. And I said, well, why didn't you call me? He said, well, why didn't I need to call you? I took care of it, you know? And I'm thinking, that's a good thing.
Let me throw in a plug for the maintenance department. Frank and Don and I were in a meeting this week with all the maintenance personnel from the state and around the state. And in one of the meetings that we were at, the guy giving the talk was telling about what maintenance, you know, preventive maintenance, all this stuff. And he said, now, the big thing is for your personnel, they shouldn't have any more than 60,000 square feet per person. And I looked at Frank and I said, how bad are we all? We did the math. 211,000 square feet per person. And look what a great job we do with that.
Oh, yeah, they do a tremendous job. I said, our schools are in great shape. And it's not just a react. And they go in and figure out if there's things that need to be fixed and everything. So they do a tremendous job. And along with that, that ESG project, they're in full swing right now. If you go to the schools, our maintenance people and our custodians, they're working to make sure our schools be ready come August 1st. And you know, another thing that is good is, you know, we've got summer workers. I think we've got 10 summer workers this year. And that really puts that extra shine on some things that we just don't have time to do.
Your painting and stuff like that, you can get to.
Yes. Another thing, if you all get time, please go out. Eight of our nine elementary schools have summer Read to Be Ready camps. It's a four-week camp. It's for kindergarten, first and second graders. And if you really want to see, I say, what school ought to look like, you need to go, because those kids are having fun. They're taking them on field trips. They're reading books. It is just amazing. And I am so glad that we put in for those grants. On the downside, I hope that our legislators will listen and find the money to fund it after this year. That was one thing that they took out of the budget, and nobody really knew about it.
They slipped that one in on us.
They slipped that one in on us. And there are a lot of people upset. We have emailed the commissioner, and people have emailed the governor, and hopefully get to talk to him about that soon. Because that, you know, there's a lot of things you can do to help students be successful. You can, you know, we've tried everything. It really doesn't make sense to lengthen the school day. It doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, sometimes when you can try that nine on and two off, and you try to work that week, you know those kids are wore out. But that's summertime, we've got the buildings there. We've got the best professional staff of teachers that money can buy. And they're willing to work, and them students and the parents will bring them. And it's just a perfect match. So if they don't fund it, we've got to figure out some way to do some things like that. I mean, we've got STEM camps going on. We've got, there's a big art camp that a lot of our art teachers work with, Clinton City. We've got a lot of athletic camps and things like that. And our kids need to be unplugged from technology and doing more of that stuff. So excited about that. They do the Boys and Girls Club, but they're also doing Read to Be Ready Summer Camp, too. Now, Briceville's the only school that's not doing it, but they're doing another, and they've partnered with another corporate, another entity, and Dirt Steel doing a camp, too. And, you know, we do the leaps after school, and we're using some of that money, and that's a tremendous thing. So our schools are not just used from 8 to 3. And our teachers do an amazing job with that.
You know, Dr. Barrett, people don't understand how much grants help us.
No.
We would be in a world of hurt if we didn't have grants.
Exactly right. Well, you know, just that Gear Up grants over $1 million, over $250,000 a year. And Read to Be Ready this year was, what, $300... $300-something thousand dollars. Yes. $300,000 a year. Yeah. So you're exactly right. That helps us do that extra stuff that people really don't realize.
And I'm sorry if I keep interrupting. But another thing was, if they see our professional leave reports and they say, oh, they're going all the time, they don't understand that grants are paying for a lot of this travel.
Exactly right, exactly right, yep. And listen, our teachers are going this summer. They're going to science training, they're going to math training. They're going to a lot of training this summer. And the other thing, I just want to thank Jim and his staff. As you know, they've been working shorthanded. Reba's husband has not been in very good shape. And as you know, this time of year, when they got to get that big payroll out, you got new coming in, retirees going out. And I want to thank them and their staff. They've done an amazing job. Last thing, wanted to let you know that as of July 1, we signed a contract, we will have Mayfield's milk in all of our schools. I know that is a good thing for everybody. And I think that Margaret and her staff's worked good with that. We actually had an intern that was one of our former students come in, and they did a lot of milk testing with the students and did a lot of data, gathering data, and found out what they liked best. So we're excited about that. That's all I have, Dr. Barrett.
Committee reports. Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met Monday night. We had a long agenda, which we will not go through behind them, but we did approve three appropriations. Those are, that are appropriate for this time of year. The Gear Up Grant money, also food service and early childhood education expenditures. Those were approved by the committee and forwarded to the full board for approval, and I so moved.
Can we bring that up?
Sure.
Move second, approve appropriation, 1A, discussion.
1A, B and C.
B and C.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Gillan-Waters?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Dr. Burrow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There are also two pages of transfers that, again, are appropriate for this time of year at the end of the year. But there were a couple of changes that you have on your desk on some of those. I'm going to ask Mr. Woodward if he would explain those real quickly, and then we can approve the remainder unless there are questions.
I appreciate it, Doctor. You impressed the board. These changes are noise level changes. What happened is, we had our large teacher payroll hit. And as a result, we had a chance between then and now to really go through and scrub. And as we did, we surfaced a few things that are just like noise level adjustments. The big one is number four, and that is one that's required by the state of Tennessee. We tried to enter the one, the top portion of that with the $73.28 of indirect cost going in there. And what happened with that is that the state said, wait just a minute. The transportation equipment doesn't carry indirect cost. And so what happened there is we had to adjust that. And so that's the big one there. The others are pretty much just noise level. As I said, there's some big numbers in there, but it's just a matter of where it's coming from. Any questions? And I referenced them back to the boards. In fact, you have on here exactly what those were. For instance, on the first, on number one, the only thing that changed was the medical insurance insurance is actually two, object code 207 instead of 206. That's all that changed on that. So the funds are coming from the same place. The, the second one is that we had the... We had 426 as the, or 429, I guess it was, as the instructional supply, supplies. And it should've come from 499 instructional materials, supplies and materials. And then on the, on the number three, it's, it's the same kinda thing, it was just an object code change from, from the 71100, 116 object code to the, to the 207 medical, or 20, yeah, 207 medical insurance.
This one, that's that one right there. That's that one. That was it. I was just trying to find that, I was trying to find the other one that...
Oh, it's, are you talking about the one I started with, the one number four? Okay, it would be 2T. Item 2T.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I referenced those back, so that you could follow that. Yeah. You see?
Question about that? Yeah.
Bottom line number is the same. Thing that, that required that is that it's from last year, actually. Last year, it should've been encumbered for this year and wasn't. So that was something that, that we had no control over. But now we had to, we had to address it.
Twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars.
Closeout is going very well. And, and it looks like that we're going to have a very good closeout, no fines. That's my thought.
We like that going.
1A, 2, 2A through 2, through 2BB.
Yeah, those changes were 2E, 2K, 2N as in Nancy, and 2T as in Tom. So the committee approved the rest, the remaining of, remainder of those, which goes, like I said, all the way to 2BB. So those have been approved. So with the explanation that Mr. Woodward gave tonight, I would move that we approve all of those items on the transfer list.
2A through 2BB.
Motion made in second, that we approve the items 2A through 2BB. Discussion. Any questions? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Most she cares.
Last item, Mr. Chairman, one we didn't do on, at our committee meeting, but that was the letter regarding Consolidated Federal Projects for 19 and 20. That is the last page of the budget packet. That's the Title I and Title II allocations. And I would move that we approve those tonight.
I second that.
Move second, we approve the title, Title I. Title I allocation for...
And Title II.
Title II allocation for 17.
Yeah.
Consolidated Federal Projects Plan for 21920. Discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Most she cares.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Is I, I think I mentioned that each time we did not pass over these things lightly, we went over everything in detail on Monday night. So if anybody wants to get involved in the budget deeply, come Monday nights. Is that the only budget, only committee report we have tonight? Great. Action items. Approve student code of conduct changes, second reading.
Polly, if you wanna talk about that, I don't think there's been any changes since the first time, have there?
There's not. And the only major changes were with the dress code, and that's just about it. And with the white, we made some changes with the Chromebooks, and that was it. So there's not been any since the last time we looked at it.
Has there been a print at it yet?
They have not, like, don't your approval? It's going tomorrow.
I make a motion, we approve the code of cons.
Move second, we approve the student code of conduct on second reading, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Most she cares. Approve Head Start grantee, delegate contract, delegate supplement health and safety grant.
Dr. Burrow, the first one, the grantee delegate contract, that's just renewing our contract with our delegate in Oak Ridge. And I move that we approve it as presented.
Second. Move second, we approve the grantee delegate contract.
That's it.
Discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Most she cares. Delegate supplement health and safety grant.
Okay, Dr. Burrow, this is a request that the delegate is making to the city of Oak Ridge, not to the Head Start Office, to the city of Oak Ridge for additional safety equipment for the new building that is in, under construction now. And we have to approve that their request, and I still move that we do.
Second.
What are we approving? Did they get the grant, or...
That, that the city of Oak Ridge supplies them with the equipment that they need, not, not that we have to provide it.
I hear a motion, we approve the first mission for, then we're applying the grant.
So move.
Second.
Move second, we approve the delegate to apply for supplemental health and safety grant. Not all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Most she cares. Approve Education Solution Services, Staffing Company to manage substitute teaching needs.
Dr. Burrow, if I could, as you know, we put this on hold when we didn't have a budget. We really still don't have a budget. But what I was asking is, if we could get this approved tonight, contingent on getting our six cents through the county, that way we could start the process right at July 1, and we could, we could be ready when school starts. I think this is, as I look at one of our principals, when we do the, when we do our reflection every year, that's one of the biggest things that, that is a hindrance, I think, to a lot of, when you have an empty classroom, and we have to put teachers together, and we have to put classrooms together. And I think this will be a good way to do that. And, and we've cut down on a lot of our subs this year. We were about 1,000 days for, less than we were to get the four. But we're still, I'm at 6,000 days. And there's some days we have 25 and 30 classrooms that we don't have a sub for.
How long are we in the contract?
Just one year. And, and, and if we see, we can get out of it in 90 days, if, if we see that they're not doing what they need to be doing.
Dr. Perry, is this something that the statewide, that a lot of people are going to?
Yes, yes. We talked, we talked, Oak Ridge went to it a couple of years ago. Bluff County's going to it. Bluff County's doing the same thing. The biggest reason is, our subs can only work about 14 days a month. If they work over that, then what we have to do is, we have to provide benefits for them. And our good subs would really, some of them would really like to work full-time. And this way, it will allow them to work full-time for this company, and they will still, we still have, we still decide who they hire and what schools they go to and everything. And they will, they will employ every one of our subs that we're doing right now, correct?
And they'll go through a background check.
Yeah, they, they do, and, and that's another thing, right now, they go through background checks. The way we do it, our subs, it could be about a month before our subs get paid, because we only pay every, we pay less a month, because they're considered a contracted employee. This way, they will get paid weekly. So, so I think we'll get more of them to do that, I think we'll get more of our parents to do some subbing for us. And they will, and we, we will set up a, a training program with them. We can do a training program, and, and it is just for, it's just for subs and teachers. It's, there's nothing else out there that we're doing.
Is it up to the principals to monitor the subs?
Yes, yes. I, I think one of the biggest things that this will help with too, is, is if you get up in the morning, and you've got three teachers that have, they've got up sick, or they've got a kid sick, and they call into the school and say, hey, I've gotta have a sub. Well, that secretary's at the front desk, so sometimes it's the principal having to call the sub. Well, now it goes directly, it will go directly to that sub company. They will be the one that says, hey, I need, I'll start calling, and I'll find somebody to cover that school. So you don't have to worry about, 'cause what the principals do is, we take an assistant out, and we'll put them in that classroom, or we'll put these two classrooms together, and, or we'll pull a, we'll pull, sometimes we'll pull a P E teacher at the high school. We used to have to pull a P E teacher that was certified in either English or social studies, we'd put them in a classroom. Then you put 90 kids in the gym, well, it's a, waiting to have a disaster. So I think that it'll be, it'll be a good thing.
Not much learning going on.
Yes, yes.
And just to be clear, it looks like we're making a big decision really quickly, but this is, we vetted three different companies.
Yes.
We, this is the one that was chosen, it's been through committees. It was actually presented last month, but we, we halted that because of budget. So we just put it on hold, and now we're just moving forward with it.
Yes.
We have discussed this at length.
Yeah, we, we did an R F P. We put an R F P out, there was nine companies that did the R F P. We, we did three of them. The, we had a group from the county government plus our group. They came in, each one of them did an hour and a half presentation. From that, we scored all of them, and we picked, and we believe this one. Education Solution Services is the best one to manage our substitutes.
Well, they have an on-site person that's dealing just with Anderson County.
Yes, just with Anderson County. They will do, they're, they will be just with Anderson County. They will be, it's actually, I think, a teacher that used to be in our school system. She will be working with us on that.
Isn't she the one that's here?
Yes.
Meeting class another four months ago.
Yes, she, she used to work at Lake City Middle School, but Angie's...
Well, we, we, what we need to do is have her give us a report down the road.
Yes, yes, we will, we will, we will...
I, I just can't understand how they can get subs when we can't.
Well, it, it, the, the biggest thing is, is with them, the way they do it is, is, is they offer those benefits, but those benefits are, are, are not near what we offer as benefits. They, they have to pay probably more of that, but they can work for them full-time. See, we can't do contract employees over but 14 days a month. And what they can do, because they're an outside company, they can do, they can work for them every day of the month. So that's, that's how they do it. It is, it's not really that there's, that we're, we're gonna be saving any money, they can get new subs. A lot of our subs only work 14 days, now they can work more. And they can, they do some kind, they do some incentives with them. If they, if they get a new sub on and they work 10 days, then they, they give them an extra days' pay and things like that. Everybody, every school system that I've talked to is, is they, they really...
Happy with it.
They're really happy with it, yes.
We gotta do something, 'cause we're not paying them enough to really...
Yes.
Is their pay, what they're paying is equitable to what we were paying? Is it almost...
Yes, their, their, their pay will stay the same. And, and we are right in line, we're, we're actually in line with Knox County, with, with Throme County, with, with a lot of our schools. A couple of schools' systems, we actually pay our subs more than our certified teachers more. Our certified teachers are 85? 80. And then our regular subs that are just, that, that don't have a degree is 65.
I move that we approve Education Solution Services, Managed Substitute Teaching provided, that we're receiving the six cents.
Yep. Yep.
Second.
Move second, we approve the Education Solution Services Staffing Company, discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Most she cares.
So all I have? Jim, do we need to, do, do we need, because you are shorthanded, do we need to allow more overtime for your staff here to close out the school year? We need to approve, you just opened up for you to do that? 'Cause I know sometimes we can't carry that, we can't carry that time over. We, we, so we need a motion just to allow latitude on the, on using the, on, on using the comp time.
And, and I will set up for the next year.
Yes, for next year, yep.
Move. Move second, we approve additional comp times just for the budget department.
I asked department, yep.
Discussion. Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Most she cares. Anything else? Any meetings we need to set? Don't forget Monday night.
Five o'clock.
Yep, five o'clock.